Do you care?
I'll sit in council. I can't hold them.
Let's try stepping, see how it feels, but don't like it, go back.
[Laughter]
Are you sure?
Yes.
Wow.
That'll be it.
Yes, you were the.
Yes, exactly.
Are we good? Okay, good evening. Welcome to the City of San Clemente Planning Commission for Wednesday, September 20th, 2023, here at City Hall. I call this meeting to order. Commissioner McCann, do you mind leading us in the pledge tonight?
Sure.
Thank you.
To the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, our God, and the Israel, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'm going to say for the record, all commissioners are present and skip the roll call. You good with that? Okay. Tonight, we have two special orders of business. The first is a presentation by our deputy of community, Deputy Director of Community Development on the public outreach on district elections. Mr. Otamian, would you like to take the floor?
Thank you, Chair Cosgrove. Adam Otamian, Deputy Community Development Director. Tonight, I have a special presentation for the purpose of public outreach as it relates to the city's current transition from at-large to district elections. All right, so some brief recent history of district elections in San Clemente. There was a citizen petition placed on the 2018 ballot asking if residents wanted elections to be conducted by district at that time. About 70% of the respondents or the voters indicated a preference for at-large elections. That initiative failed and no change to the election process occurred at that time. The city subsequently was served with a demand letter to transition to district elections in July of 2023, along with four other local Orange County cities. The legal climate as it relates to district elections is quite vast. There are hundreds of cities, school districts, and special districts that have been served with demand letters and have proceeded to true transition because the legal fight is expensive and the potential to win is unclear. Santa Monica is still going through that process, but most other cities faced with this have decided to transition rather than fight it. State law does provide a safe harbor from litigation costs, but the timelines are challenging. We'll go through the timelines right now. But essentially, it starts with a first public hearing, which occurred on August 15th, 2023. And that's where the city council adopted a resolution of intent to transition to district elections. Once the public hearing is established and this process is underway, the main crux of this, we'll call it, project is outreach, is getting the community engaged, working with community groups, and putting out information online as well as social media posts. And the goal here is to have an open, honest dialogue with discussions about options. The second public hearing was held September 5th. This is where council conducted a public hearing, received public input concerning the composition of potential council election districts. The council directed the consultant to move forward with a draft district map containing four districts and an elected mayor. The, if council adopts an ordinance to have an elected mayor, council will determine whether the mayoral term is two or four years. As far as community outreach goes, and this is both for the public watching this, but also for the planning commissioners as residents of the city, the public is invited to become, you know, be part of this process. To facilitate that, the city has a district elections webpage on the city's website. The specific address is on the, on the screen. It's www.san-clemente.org/districtelections, all one word. In addition to this, we have social media posts. Information on the website is available in English and Spanish and will be updated as the process continues. Ads have been placed in the San Clemente Times in both Spanish and English, and there is a dedicated email address for district elections at districtelections@san-clemente.org. The next steps are an opportunity for the public input on the district maps. There are informational flyers and blank maps that have been placed on, at all city facilities as of September 6th of this year. Between September 6th and the 14th, public maps will be considered, I should say submitted public maps during this timeframe will be submit, will be considered by the council at the October 3rd public hearing. However, this is not the last time that a map can be submitted. There are, there will be some additional opportunities, and you can still submit the maps, and they may be considered at a later public hearing. On September 21st, all of the maps that have been previously submitted will be published on the city's website for review. Now, as far as, you know, what the maps need to contain in order to create these district boundaries, each council district shall, will need to contain a nearly equal population. Council districts will need to be geographically contiguous. The, to the extent practical, the geographic integrity of any local neighborhood or community of interest should be represented and included within a single district, and council district boundaries should be easily identifiable and understandable by residents. So the continuing timeline here is the third public hearing will be held on October 3rd. This is to discuss the content of draft maps and the sequence of elections. On October 10th, the, will be the deadline for any new or amended maps and sequence of elections to be posted online. October 17th, the public hearing number four, to actually select the maps, will be held. Also, on October 17th, the public hearing to introduce an ordinance to transition to district elections will be considered, and November 7th is the deadline for, is the deadline for wrapping this project up, which we would anticipate as the adoption date for an ordinance to transition to district elections based on council's determinations. So that leaves us with, when will district elections be implemented? Based on this council direction, the first election that would be affected would be November 5th of 2024. That, the, a couple of the council seats that are up at that time would be transitioned to district elections, and the rest of the council seats would be transitioned at November, on the November 6th, 2026 election date. So that is my presentation on district elections, and I, along with Jenna Burns, our deputy city attorney, are available for any questions.
We'll start down here.
Adam? Yeah. Who authored the demand letters?
I don't have their name off the top of my head, but I can find, I can find that out and provide that information.
Okay. Yeah, and the other cities that fought this, so they were in a lawsuit, were they in a lawsuit with the authors of the demand letters, or the state, or who was on the other side of the lawsuit? And I'm putting on the spot, maybe you can get back with that also.
I believe that the demand letters that all the cities in, let's say, in California have received are from different, there are multiple law firms that are, are doing this. I don't know that it's just one law firm.
So there is one primary, one by the name of Shankman. I'm not sure if that's what the city did receive in this case, and they are filed on behalf of citizens.
But if there's a lawsuit, someone else has to, you know, be the other side of the lawsuit. So is it the law firm, not the citizens?
No, it's the citizens, but it is, law firms have kind of made a business of filing it on behalf of citizens, if that makes sense.
And is it, does it, could I issue a demand letter that we demand to stay at-large?
Certainly.
Okay, interesting.
Then you'd have to sue. So if you're ready to sue, to have it done and pay for it.
Okay, something to think about.
Yeah, this isn't new. This, back in 92, when I got elected, Downey City Council, they'd already been doing it, and it's one firm in LA County. Now they're slowly branching out into Orange County and San Bernardino County, but it's usually always one firm. Downey lucked out because we had five districts, which has a problem because one of, an at-large district, but that at-large district is when one of the other two regional districts have their election. So I was in District 3, at-large is 5. That was always bound, you know, every four years for 3, every four years for 5. So District 3, and then 2 and 4 were at the two-year period. So where that weakness is, is District 3, my district, we only got to vote every four years, but we did get to vote twice. The other regional district got to vote the two years in between, so they could affect a change, you know, when I couldn't, but nobody ever sued. And that's what I think is interesting, why they want a mayor, because five districts would make it equal for people chances to vote and when you vote. You know, you'd have 3 and 2, but again, you'd be off-sequence, but again, you'd have one chance in your district to vote every four years, where if they throw in the mayor, they can't, it complicates it. And even a two, even if it was a two-year term, it would set, it would be like Downey again.
I think the mayor is supposed to be two-year term, is what I understood.
That's kind of weird. And it's weird anyways, because most cities just rotate. You know, because mayor, the only thing you can do is call a meeting. So that would be my 25 cents. There really is no power, and you get to sign the checks.
What was the motive?
For the mayor? I don't know, I haven't.
They were wanting to have the districts. We could talk a lot about that.
Yeah, well, in LA, it's, it has to do with ethnicity, just like in the congressional districts. It's a, it's a partisan sort of a law firm that, I'm not going to go into it.
Other questions?
Chair?
Yes.
I have found an answer to Commissioner McCann's question about the law firm. So this is attachment one of the packet that was provided to the city council at their August 15th meeting, and it includes a copy of the demand letter. It is from the law offices of Michelle R. Jackson, and their office is in Dana Point.
I would presume that the city council knows, of course they know, in 2018, 70% of the people decided they didn't want it. City council's already voted on this. Why is the planning commission included, like, what's this about right now? How are we supposed to weigh in?
This is just input.
It's just info.
Yeah, this is, this is a, yeah, this is an opportunity to expand public outreach. So for anybody viewing this, or if any planning commissioners would like to, you know, be up to date on this process or submit maps, just to provide this information for the public's benefit. Unless there's other questions, I would just encourage those interested to go to the city website and be kept up to date. As maps are drafted and public hearings are announced, people can still participate in this. Are there any further comments?
I have one question. Sorry. How, how do they choose which two districts are up for election for '24? Because everybody's from different places right now. I'm just curious, is there a procedure already in place about that?
That is a great question. I do not know the actual answer to that.
And I don't off the top of my head. I'm happy to look into it for you, Commissioner. I'm sure there is a process, though. I just don't know it right now.
I don't think, I don't think it's a state mandated. When Downey Incorporated is a city, just reknits its history, they flipped, they flipped a coin to figure which, which ones were grouped, you know? But again, the mayor makes it, it makes it complicated in terms of access to voting. The at-large district does.
Mr. Crandall?
Yeah, so Adam or the attorney, our opportunity to participate is the same as any public member at these meetings up through, what was it, November 10th or whatever that date was? So if we do want to get involved, do we need to identify ourselves that we're on the planning commission or as non-issue?
I don't think it would be necessary. I think that would be up to you, because you are also a voter of San Clemente, and if that's how you want to say it, but I think it would probably be a standard to also state your role as the planning commissioner, too.
Just out of curiosity, now, somebody who rents a home can run for city, city office, right? City council?
Yes, that's correct.
So rent or own, do they have to be there so long? Just curious.
Long enough to vote?
Well, I mean, can I move in a month before and run, run it? You can't. Whoa.
We can, we can, we can find that information and provide it. I, it's been a while since I've seen what the requirements are, but I think there's a minimum.
You have to be a registered voter in San Clemente. I think that's the requirement. But it probably depends if you're a general or charter city. Downey has a charter that says you got to reside there one year. A general law city follows the state. Yeah. So, and I don't know what the state. That's my recollection. You have to just have to be a registered voter in San Clemente.
It might be something to bring up as this transition's happening, is, is, you know, if, if I move out and rent a place, then I could, and nobody's running this particular district anyway. It's, it's a little gamesmanship, but it's there.
Adam, thank you for the information and the opportunity to comment. Again, I would just encourage those interested to follow this on the city website, please come to city council meetings and participate. Our next special order of business is recognition of Commissioner Scott McCann, our chair for the last year. Yay! How do we want to do this, Adam? Maybe we could start with some comments from the commission, and then you could present the plaque, or however you, how do you want to do it? I think that's a perfect idea. Okay. I'll go ahead and lead off, and then we'll just go down now. I just want to, first of all, thank you. Scott, you did a great job. You were really, I thought, extremely conscious of being fair, respectful, keeping us moving, but doing it in a way that was gentle and not overbearing, and I know I tend to hog the mic sometimes, and you kind of nudged me, but I think that was fair. But I really thought that you made an effort to be courteous to those that were in attendance and to make sure everybody had a chance to speak their, their mind and get that on the, and I thought you did a great job. So I want to thank you very much for that, and I'm going to do my best to follow in, in that footstep, and, and those of also Commissioner Crandall, who was the chair before that. So Commissioner Prescott Lefler, would you like to say a few words, and then we'll just go down, down the row here?
Very few, because I don't have much of a voice tonight. So it's a difficult job to be a chairperson and always be here and rope us all in, and there's just one word that describes you as, as far as your ability. You were always fair. We didn't always agree, but you provided an opportunity for us to share our thoughts, and I appreciated that. And you helped us be a team, and it was, it's good. And I know this, this, the whole commission here appreciates your dedication.
Thank you.
Okay, where do I start?
The list is long.
No, I also just want to thank you for an excellent job, and I actually proved it by voting for you to continue as chairman. But yeah, I just thank courtesy, you know, a lot of, you're very courteous, patient, because we had a few difficult items on the agenda, and yeah, I think you just able to rally the group and, and keep us on track. So, good job, Matt.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Taking all the words I was gonna, but I just want to really thank you for doing an excellent job as chairman.
I'll piggyback on all the comments and say one more, that he was also always courteous and respectful of staff and the applicants, and that is a major part of the job. And to the commissioners, although we're tough enough that, you know, we have discussions on both sides of the issues, and you did a wonderful job. So, thank you.
Yeah, I'll echo my fellow commissioners, and what came to mind right away is, is composure, and is my first time on any kind of city commission, and you're a great leader, and I'm glad you're an example to me, and, and you did a wonderful job, and, and you're very respectful and had great composure, and, and I echo the rest. It's hard going last coming up with something creative, but anyway, you did great. I appreciate it.
Well, thank you very much to all of you and staff and council that appointed me and us, and I thoroughly, thoroughly enjoy working with all of you, and it doesn't bother me in the least if we disagree. I think that's good, actually. So, thank you for the kind words, and I look forward to, you know, supporting you chair as the chair.
I'll take any tips.
And then on behalf of staff, Adam and I would repeat the same things, and thank you, former Chair McCann, for the time that you spent interacting with us, making sure that you were prepared for the meetings and addressed questions ahead of time, and the extra time that you took to get to know us as well as people, and so we recognize that and appreciate that. And so we do have a plaque to recognize that, so I'll walk up and hand this off to you.
Great. Yeah, very nice. All right, yay! Okay, well deserved. Want to take a picture? What the heck? All right. Yeah. Okay, next item on the agenda is item number five. It's the minutes from our regular study session. It's the minutes from our regular study session on August 16th, as well as our minutes from the regular planning commission meeting of August 16th. Does anyone have any revisions, comments about the minutes? Seeing none, do we have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Okay, we have a motion from Chair Protab McCacken and a second by Vice Chair Camp. All in favor?
If I could, just, could we clarify that it's a motion for both of the minutes?
Is that your intention?
That's fine.
Okay.
Or one at a time?
What's your motion?
Does anybody have a question on the second? Then my motion is for both.
My second is for both.
Okay. Are we good with that? Are we okay with that motion? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I wasn't in attendance.
So you abstain?
One or two. Oh, you...
Both, same thing.
All right, well, the motion passes. Next item is item six. It's an opportunity for members of our audience to address the commission on matters of public interest which pertain to the city but are not otherwise on the agenda. I do have two speaker cards, so I will call you in a second. Just want to state that we do ask you to step up to the lectern, and you will have three minutes. We have a little lighting system there. Unfortunately, we're not able to get into a back-and-forth discussion. All we can do is hear, take, listen, and that's what we're limited on to do. But we welcome you and want to thank you for attending. Any order? Does anyone want to go first?
We should confirm that those are not for items on the agenda.
Yeah, it's not. They've written it on here. Yep, did you want to go first, Charles? Okay, so Charles Pope.
Is anyone here old enough to remember George Goble? George once asked some questions. Do you ever feel like the world was a tuxedo and you were a pair of brown shoes? That's kind of how we feel tonight. We, one of our neighbors said there was a meeting to come to, and we could help lend some support. And I see our neighbors are not here, and we're the only ones stupid enough to, you know, to come out of 90 units in our community. But we live in Bay Cliff Village. There's 90 units, three different associations, and it's at the corner of Monte Vista and Comino Capistrano. And for those of you who know the area, traffic sees it as kind of a pass-through, a quick shortcut across town, or get to the freeway or to Costco or whatever, from the Coast Highway, without having to go through, you know, Capital Beach or whatever. And they tend to drive kind of fast. We live at an intersection there at Monte Vista where it's a blind intersection both ways, both down the hill, through the curb, and then also coming over a rise from the topside. And it's dangerous to come in and out of the community. Plus, it's over three lanes wide, including the bike lane and all that. So it's hard for someone to get up enough speed to make a run across there. And most of our, many of our people are, you know, they range from in the 70s to over 100 years old. So a lot of them won't take the chance. So we were hoping for some sort of control. That's what I came to support. I don't know what that would be, or who would be responsible for it. But see, there's some sort of traffic indication, stop sign, stop light, speed bumps. However, you guys would best see. My recommendation to the council, or whatever, would be that one of the people from traffic or whatever, go and sit at the intersection and try to pull out and see, you know, you've got to really gun it to make sure you get across. And it's a dangerous intersection. Back in October last year, we did have an accident there where someone did a couple of circles in the middle of the road, hit one car, and drove up the hill, ran into the brick wall, and stopped. You know, they were on their way to the DMV. I don't know how, you know, I imagine they didn't pass their test or whatever. But anyway, I don't know if you need, you said there's no back and forth. I don't know what else information I give you. I don't know if someone submitted something or have any idea about that. But if there is something, maybe someone could contact us with the paperwork and let us know. Maybe we'll submit that form or whatever it is you would want from us.
Yeah, why don't we hear from the next speaker, and then we can make a comment or two to point you in the right direction?
Yeah, she'll make the most sense anyway. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you, Charles, for your comments. Okay, Susan Pope.
Yeah, thank you for hearing us. Obviously, I'm on the same topic. And just to bring a little more clarification than Chuck, who did a great job, I thought. But if you were to, for instance, exit the I-5 headed south on Community Australia, and take a right and go to Comino Capistrano, you could then head down to PCH. And it's a pretty well-traveled road. It heads through, it's all through residential areas, and the speed limit there is 25 miles an hour. Inexplicably, not too long before you get to our senior community, the speed limit increases to 30 miles an hour, where then you come to the street coming out of our community that Chuck was describing, where coming from that direction to PCH, you start heading down a hill and around a curve. There's no sign indicating that there's a street coming up. There's no indication, there's nothing there. There's just, it's blind, and it's blind both ways. So we live about a 10-minute walk to the beach, except that it takes a half an hour to walk down there, because we can't cross the street there, and there's no sidewalk on our side of the street. So unless you take your life into your hands, you go sprinting across this street with the blind curves, you have to walk all the way up another half a mile the wrong direction, then cross the street, and then walk down on the sidewalk. So anyway, it is clearly a safety issue. It's kind of a disaster waiting to happen. People coming out of our community go way around and exit on a different street, you know, and go way out of their way, because it's just too dangerous to cross. So as Chuck said, we're hoping to have someone look into it. We hope the planning commission would be that organization, that you would send someone out to really check it out. Right now, there happen to be speed monitors out there that says 30, your speed, you know, it's supposed to be 30, your speed is something else. And so I don't know if that's a first step that maybe our neighbors asked you to get involved with or not. But we're here to just ask for some involvement and ask for guidance of what we should do next to draw more attention to it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I will just say, you've come to the right place. This is our purview. We don't direct staff in that manner, as you may be thinking we might. But there is a traffic department here in the city that do these kinds of projects. And believe it or not, there's quite a few on the list. You need to get yours on the list. And Adam back there, I think, can point you in the right direction. But to help you get started in that, it's really best if it is submitted by the community, so that you can specify the issues, get your neighbors involved, and then the traffic department will engage. So the gentleman behind you is able to help you take that step. Yeah. So thank, but thank you for taking the time to come and speak to us tonight. Okay, that takes us to the consent calendar. Item seven, we don't have any items, so we're going to proceed on with our first item of business. Item eight, public hearings. It is a continuation of an item that we heard on August 2nd. So it is a public hearing, and it's a continuation. So what we're going to do is, basically, it's because it's a public hearing and we're continuing it, we are going, I'm going to ask my colleagues if, since the meeting on the second, are there any disclosures or conflicts, ex parte communications, that anyone wants to disclose on this project? Okay. This is an architectural permit 23079, the Krogas residence for a second-story ADU. And you've been through this before, but the process is, we're going to take the staff report. Does any quick questions? We'll ask the staff, and then we're going to give you the opportunity to speak for 10 minutes. Okay. If there are no other disclosures or conflicts of interest, why don't we turn to our staff for their report on this matter? And is that you?
Yes, thank you, Chair Cosgrove. David Krogas, Assistant Planner. So I think we know the project location, 205 Avenue de Miramar, just west of T Street, as seen on the left image on the screen. So the request before this is for an architectural permit. This is requesting a second-story ADU above the rear detached garage on a historic property. And the reason it's here, it's because it's deviating from objective ministerial ADU standards. Brief background for anyone watching. This was reviewed by the planning commission on August 2nd, and it was continued to this meeting today, September 20th. Some concerns that were expressed by the commission are listed here. We had comments on potential impacts from view, light, and air on the adjacent multifamily development due to the ADU's proximity and height. So the project does not change. There's only, essentially, there is a slight change towards the rear of the ADU, and we can see that on the screen. If I can use my arrow. Right here, so this portion will be stepping back to meet the four-foot setback. This is a side adjacent to the property where concerns came up from the commission. And just to go over the other development standards, so the proposed height is 20 feet. It remains at 20 feet. The proposed setbacks for the front, west, and rear remain the same. And the noncompliant setback on the east side remains at 1'6" for the portion that is not stepped back. And that's the front portion of the ADU. The distance between the buildings remains at 5 feet. Lot coverage at 39.4%. And again, no additional parking is required for this development, since they are within 0.5-mile radius from transit. The materials do not change. They do stay the same as listed here on the screen. Since we only have the rear portion stepping back to meet the four-foot setback, the front elevation does not change, as viewed from the street and as viewed at the previous planning commission meeting. So here's a slide showing the iterations from the first all the way to the third design. Just to walk you guys through it, the first design, we see the cantilevered portion of the ADU above the garage. And then from the first to second design, the applicant got rid of the cantilevered portion. And now from the second to the third, we see that rear portion being stepped back. And I'll add here that staff did add a condition of approval to add the clay tile roofing on this shed roof. Here's a photo simulation that's been provided in the staff report. So here we see the ADU and the adjacent property on the left. Here's one more. So in conclusion, staff finds that the project is consistent with the design guidelines and general plan policies, and therefore recommends that the planning commission determine the project is categorically exempt from the requirements of SEQA and approve the project subject to conditions of approval. And I will add that we did receive a letter of support from the adjacent neighbor, and that's provided in the attachment seven.
Say that again? Will you say that last part again?
We received a letter of support from the adjacent neighbor at 2:30 Miramar, I believe. In attachment seven, yeah. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, sir. That was good. Thank you very much.
We do have the owners present for any questions.
Okay, before we get to them, are there any commission questions of David? Commissioner Crandall?
David, I, we didn't get a color board or materials board on this particular project, which we typically get. You caught it in the conditions of approval that they've got to do it. And I appreciate you taking your time to put that in where it probably should have been on the drawings. But just want to compliment you on catching those and making sure they're in the conditions.
Any other questions for staff? Seeing none? As the applicant, you get 10 minutes to make your presentation. If you don't mind coming forward, maybe just stating your name, and we'll start the timer.
I'm Lars Krogas, my wife Stephanie. And I think we went over everything at the previous meeting. We would like to say we've gone through the subcommittee hearing meeting, the previous meeting, and now this meeting. And each time, we were asked for some changes or suggested some changes. And each time, without fail, we made those changes. So we hope that the planning commission likes what we've done. I think from the picture rendition of the house, it keeps the historical look of the entire property. It really flows nicely, and I think that any change in that would kind of make the property not look as nice as it does now and as it did probably in 1926 when it was built. We've spent utmost time and resources to bring this home back to a beautiful piece of property, and we hope that all of you folks understand that and appreciate that. That's it for me.
Well, since we have 10 minutes, if you don't mind, I'll take it, because I feel like this is our second bite at the apple. So while we were, did not get the outcome that we hoped last time, I do want to take a minute to say, really appreciated the time. You were all here for quite a while. You suggested a straw vote instead of voting. You had healthy debate, discussion, put forth some creative ideas. And I really want to underscore that we considered those. And actually, with Commissioners Crandall and Cosgrove, we did the first time. And just in case it comes up again, I do want to point out a few things from our thinking. Example, you know, shifting over, in case that comes up, 2 feet. It was brought up before, that then it's too close to the house, you know, making the place smaller. We thought about that. We've done that twice. We do believe we're at about as small as we can get for functionality and for the requirements that the state, I believe it is, puts on ADU, counterspaces, appliances, cupboards, you know, all of those things. So I think we're really about as small as we can get. There was a question about, you know, there's lots of ways to skin a cat. Why not just make the garage your ADU? We're not in favor of that idea at all. We live on a very crowded street. We've heard it at our meeting on August 2nd, and we witnessed it. Our street is incredibly impacted. We believe we have a garage. We already have one car. We park outside of it. We're going to use the garage for our cars so that we don't add to the congestion on the street. Anyway, I wanted to point those things out, that we thought about them all. The step back of the 10 feet 2 inches, we think is the best one. And then lastly, since I think you're looking at it, but it wasn't on the screen, we made a point to really illustrate, we asked our architect, our rendering, where the windows are. I think it will alleviate, I mean, I hope. I can't see it any other way, from my point of view, the issue of air. Our place is already set back from 203, and the first window is only partially aligned with where our wall would be. The back window is now clear, so it has full air, as well as the backyard of those folks. Those are the areas that is completely set back now. So it opened the back window, and it opened the backyard. What else? I think that's it. Okay?
That's it.
Thanks for your consideration again.
Thank you for your presentation. Are there any questions of the applicant?
I went by your place, no, not directly.
Okay, then let me just move us in with our process here. There are, I don't see any members of the public, other than the applicants in the audience, but I will just, for the record, say, are there any members of the public that want to speak on this? Seeing none? There's really, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. Now we can move into discussion. So Commissioner Davis, did you want to lead us off?
Well, I went by the house today, and it's beautiful. It's a little work of art. I mean, it's really gorgeous. I mean, it's really gorgeous, and they've done a really classy job to protect and preserve what was. And I believe that they'll be looking to do that moving forward, too. So, I really like what they've done. And anyway, so that's all I got. I went there and really sat there for about 15 minutes today and kind of tried to take it all in. And it's nice.
Thank you. Commissioner?
Yeah, I want to thank the applicant for listening to the comments and so forth. I think we met a balance between the historic zoning code, the local code, and the existing nonconforming condition. We got a balance, and that's what I was looking for in the last meeting, so we've done that. And I think the five findings that were being asked to make tonight, I can make. I just have one issue, and I'll wait for, I think Commissioner Camp may have a comment on this, too. Where the recess is, we don't really know what the roof is. There's no tile or sloped roof over it. And one of the things we see in our design guidelines and all is five-sided architecture. The four sides and the roof. You can see, it's just a shelf. And I think the draftsman who was working on this put the rear roof on the back of the building at the same plate height as existing, where there's going to be floor joists cantilevering out there at that shelf to hold up, whatnot. And to accomplish that one thing that's in the guideline, I think if it was a hip on that corner and the tile returned around would answer the questions of the four- or five-sided architecture. And that's the only comment I've got on the building, and I'm...
Our architect did leave it out, and we talked to David about it. And so, he made sure that he put it in that the tile will wrap all the way around, so it'll be a nice clean look.
Wonderful. You answered my question, and as I said at the last meeting, if these things were done, you've got my support.
Chair Protam, McCacken, did you have any comments?
I'm probably going to be in favor, but I have been, you know, I went out there and looked at it. This is the closest, even allowing that abutment where it comes out. It is the closest side yard, second story, or distance of a second story anywhere along that block. And I'm just not sure if we might not be setting a precedent when the next ADU comes by that wants to do that, that essentially makes our standard that you can go, you know, that the side yard setback, even by the state's standards, doesn't have to be met. Because we still haven't changed Table 1. It still says it doesn't comply with the standards. And while it does look better, and they do accommodate the window, I don't have a good reason why, just because we compromised that we allowed it for when the next one comes through.
Okay. Vice Chair Camp?
Yeah, I'll just respond to that by saying that we do, if they are asking for this kind of a variance, we do evaluate these things individually. So, just because we did it in one location doesn't necessarily mean that... I mean, certainly, the applicant can make a comparison, but we still have an opportunity to evaluate it on its own merit, any other project. I appreciate the fact that they've gone through, I guess, three iterations. And I think we agreed last time that what we needed was that relief at the bathroom of the ADU and with the wrapping of that roof on that side and pulling back of the window. I think they've accomplished that, so I'm prepared to support the project.
Thank you. Commissioner McCann?
Sure. I like the project. I'm supportive. Thank you for being responsive to the city. I'm looking at the size of the floor plan, and it's very small. And I'm sympathetic that you can't and shouldn't shrink it more. I recognize that, you know, we're doing a reduced setback on the side, but given the historic nature of the property and the garage, I think we need to align it, and for me, that's the justification for doing it. So, I'm supportive of the project. Thank you for working to make it better.
Commissioner Prescott Lefler?
I appreciate that you went through all the work that you've done. My opinion has not changed, however, because I still believe it's too close. It's too narrow, and I agree that it could set a precedence. My request last time was either shorten it or, you know, shift it, and I see that you can't do that. It looks like you have the support of the commission, so my no vote wouldn't affect it one way or the other.
Thank you. I'm in support of the project as well because it is a historic building, and it has constraints that you're working with. And you have a huge front setback, which I think mitigates a lot. Yes, the eastern side is, has been the topic of focus. And I think you have addressed it as best as you can. And I think that the finding of it not being detrimental to the neighborhood, we can make. So, I think for that reason, I'm in support of the project. Is there any further discussion or comments before we... Okay. Does someone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. I move that we approve architectural permit AP 23-079 Krogeus Residence, second-story ADU, with the added condition that they wrap the roofing material around that side on that lower shelf as discussed.
Commissioner McCann, we already have, sorry, we already have a condition in there to address that.
Oh, that is okay. Awesome. Thank you.
Would you include the determination on SEQA in part of your motion?
That's what I was just trying to find.
Yeah, page 5. Keep going back. There you go.
Yeah, and as part of my motion, I move that we determine the project categoric exempt per the staff report specifications and approve the architectural permit per the staff report.
I'll second that.
Okay, why don't we, I'm just going to want to, because I've heard that there's different points of view. Well, this will go down the line. So, Commissioner Prescott Lefler?
I'm a no.
Commissioner McCann?
Aye.
Vice Chair Camp?
Aye.
Chair Protam, McCacken?
Yes.
Commissioner Crandall?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
And I am an aye as well. Motion carries. Congratulations. Thank you. I'm sure you know this, but I just want to make sure you are aware that you, before you can get a building permit, you're going to need to go before the California Coastal Commission, and that there is a 10-day window of appeal of this project to the City Council. Staff, is there anything else that we should inform the applicants at this time?
I'll just add real quick a clarification on that appeal note. So, the 10 days is an appeal period for the public within 10 days. But then the council has the right to call up any item, so they're typically just outside of that 10-day period. So, the next meeting of the City Council is the first Tuesday in October. At that meeting, they'll review the minutes, so that's their opportunity. So, that is the final period of appeal. So, that will be when it closes, is when the council has their opportunity. And then, as was noted, the Coastal Commission review will be a component of the next step.
Now, on the Coastal Commission, do we start that now, or do we wait until all the appeals are finished?
So, in that...
Or finalized?
Yeah, we can start that concurrently. That's something that you can communicate with David on. So, we'll have, if there's a form that you'll need to submit to the Coastal Commission, we'll get the, you won't have the final signed resolution if you submit tomorrow, for instance. But we'll relay that to you once the final appeal period closes, assuming that there's not an appeal.
Yeah, please be in touch with Mr. Corillo on all those next steps. Okay. Congratulations again. Thank you for all your cooperation. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
All right. That concludes our existing, all our public hearings. Our next item is Item 9, New Business. I see none. Item 10 is Old Business. There is none. Item 11 is Reports of Commissioners and Staff. I have a report. Jonathan, did you have a report that you need to make?
I have a couple items I can address, yes.
Okay. I'm going to go ahead and start, and then go to you. So, as you guys will recall, we spent six months working on streamlining. It went before council September 14th. I attended that. I spoke as, represented the Planning Commission for my three minutes and managed to summarize our six months of work within that time limit. I'm proud of myself. Yes. I also spoke to our recommendation that we be the appeal body for the zoning administrator. And I'm happy to announce that the streamlining, first reading of the zoning ordinance did pass. Our recommendation to be the appeal body also passed. We had a thorough recommendation to reduce the appeal fee to $100. That did not pass. So, as part of that meeting at the end, where it's kind of similar to where we are now in our meeting, where it's council reports and discussion, there was additional discussion about, that ended up being direction to us from the council. So, there was two specific things that the council discussed. And the city manager called me and communicated that to me formally, that the city council is requesting that we do a couple things. One is that we review zoning permitted uses by condition and accessory uses for clarity and update as necessary. The specific example provided to me was there is confusion about the Primo Foods action. As you'll recall, that was, before the zoning administrator, it was previously a bicycle shop. Then, that turned over to be a kind of a convenience store, a quick food restaurant in the south end of town. And that was approved by the zoning administrator. Once Primo Foods opened, there were just a flood of complaints from residents because they couldn't park. The way that people were parked illegally was an issue. And so, we've actually dealt with it a couple times with some red curbing. The council's dealt with it. So, the question that came via the council to the city manager, to us, is, can you take a look at how those situations can be prevented in the future? So, that's one. The second was a request for us to conduct a workshop with developers and architects that do business in the city on a regular basis, to ask them to make a presentation and collect their feedback on their experience as a customer of the city, as someone doing business with the city. What do they perceive as working well? What do they perceive maybe could be improved? And any specific suggestions that they have as a user of our permitting process. So, that was the two things that we were asked to do. And so, I definitely would like to get everyone's feedback and comments, but I'm going to make a, after which I can make a suggestion of maybe how we might proceed. But let me turn it over to you guys.
My question would be for Jonathan. Wouldn't normally this request be made of the city planner and the community development director? Since we don't formally direct the planning staff to do things that cost money to research.
Correct, as far as like procedurally, how do actions of the council filter through to the Planning Commission? There's two ways. One would be the existing work plan that the Planning Commission has, and the other would be through action items that the council takes when they vote to initiate some item. I am familiar with this item, and I, so on the staff's side, we'll receive action agendas after council meetings. And I am aware that Cecilia, as the Director of Community Development, was tasked with initiating this topic. So, I think this is a good opportunity to introduce that item, and then it'll be up to Cecilia to agendize. And so, happy to hear any initial, you know, thoughts here. Obviously, it's not an agendized item, so we can't really have discussion on the topic right now. But it will be something that comes to the Planning Commission and can evolve at that point as well. If there's, you know, if the way that it's agendized the first time doesn't capture fully, you know, what the commission thinks is going to be the most beneficial, I think there could be some evolution there.
Yeah. So, I do see this really being a staff effort that we then interact with. I don't see us as taking the lead on it from that perspective. Just, the council made a point that they really wanted us to continue the streamlining matters. They appreciate the fact that we took the time to be in the details and look it over, make adjustments, and they want us, they want to see it continue. And these were the specific areas that they had talked about.
And I think, you know, once those come to us, then it's in our lap, and we can do with it as we please.
That's right. That's right. I'm mentioning it the way I'm mentioning it because when it first came to us, you know, I felt that we had a number of opportunities that we could look at. Other commissioners, I think, did as well. Hey, can we look at this? Can we look at that? And it was more like, well, that's not really the scope. I would just, I mention it this because we will have, I think, an opportunity to shape the scope of these, of this work program. And I think that would probably be, the first agenda item would be, to see if we have a meeting of the minds on it. We can come, prepare with our own ideas, shape it, and then move forward. So, I just thought I'd share it that way. Is there any other comments on that?
I did watch city council meeting, and I do appreciate you getting up there and helping educate the city council from the Planning Commission perspective. And I don't, personally, I don't think three minutes is enough. I feel like we should get 10 minutes as if an applicant, I don't know how, staff seems to get all the time they want, but we only get three minutes. We don't get our fair share. So, I don't know how to adjust that, because on something like streamlining that we put six months into, they should be able to hear from us, aside from the minutes. You know, and you did a great job, but three minutes is a cram for that length of time. So, there's my couple cents there. And I do agree, let's agendize this, let's scope it out a little bit and dial it in, because I think those ideas are great.
Jonathan, did you have anything else you wanted to add to this?
Nothing to add at this time on that topic, but I do have a couple other items.
Are we good with this, everybody? Okay, let's go ahead to you then. Thank you.
Okay, great. The first is just a minor adjustment to the TFA. There's a reference to that earlier. I just wanted to point out, this is not in regards to the full Planning Commission, but for design review. We have, at the next meeting, the hotel that's at the corner of El Camino Real and Pico, that's going to be pushed to a future meeting. So, there will be a substitute item that's going to be on that agenda for the next design review meeting, which is an amendment to a prior telecom facility that the Planning Commission already approved. So, we'll still have three items on that agenda, but just wanted to provide that quick clarification. And then, just a general staffing note, that we are in process currently with interviews for the vacant senior planner position. So, that's ongoing, but we're hopeful that we can come to resolution on that in the near future. So, just wanted to provide that update as well. And you already beat me to the final item. That was just an update from the council regarding the appeals element. And so, Christopher Wright has prepared the agenda for the October 3rd, the next council meeting, at which time there'll be red lines incorporating the appeal power for the Planning Commission. So, that's going to be at the next council meeting where they'll have that opportunity to review as part of the second reading those revisions that council directed.
Thanks. And Jonathan, just so you know, I won't be able to attend DRSC on Wednesday, but Commissioner McCann has agreed to attend in my absence. So, if you could, I did email Meredith, but if you don't mind spreading the word.
Absolutely.
So, he gets the binder instead of me.
Okay, and I will be there, so thank you.
Okay, great. Thanks. Thanks. Anything else? Any other reports? Comments?
Just curious about that, you know, that outlet project, you know, that's kind of seems to be abandoned. Is there an update on that? Is this the right time to ask that? By Chick-fil-A? It's a.
Oh, the medical office?
Yeah, the medical office, Prudential, is that the same guys that are doing Mission Hospital?
Yeah, so this isn't appropriate time to ask questions like that, yes. So I, I've reached out, I don't have an immediate update to share, so that's a Providence Medical, very brief background for any who are not familiar with this. There was an amendment to the outlet's master site plan approved by the city and by coastal commission, allowing for that area to be medical office use as opposed to just strictly retail and Providence is the tenant in that space. What's been communicated is that there are, there's ongoing work related to refinancing the construction loan at that location. The city doesn't always have like a full disclosure of finances, so I can't give a firm answer on when that will restart, but that's what was communicated.
What kind of pressure does the city put on a developer that leaves something? How long's it been, you know, undeveloped or, you know, in the status it is now?
Yeah.
Has it been a year? Two years?
It's a good question. So there's, there's a couple things that the city can do. The first is if there's issues with site maintenance, we can issue citations or, well, notices first, of course. We're always going to give people the opportunity to correct the issues. So notices and then citations if they don't regarding general site maintenance. So if their wind screens are in disrepair, if there's weeds growing on the property and, and the city always manages these through complaints. So, you know, please feel free to always submit something if you see something that's in disrepair like that and we'll initiate that process on that side. The other side is through, you know, just the natural process of permit, permits expiring. And so if that is the case, then, once that permit expires, then anything associated with that is going to have to be remediated. So if they have temporary construction fencing, et cetera, the, those types of things would have to be removed at that point. This is one that I don't expect that to be the case. I think it's going to be something that does pick up and move forward. They have an opportunity to extend permits, but they need to communicate directly with the city's building official to make those requests.
And I've got one new thought. Can you talk it over within the community development department that when we have a major historic property that's being redeveloped like North Beach, like down at Pier Bowl, the possibility, and builders aren't going to like this one, a completion bond for at least making sure that they can't walk away from the historic building? They may not do their project, but that at least the completion bond would make sure that the historic property is protected.
Does that within, does that require a council action or something like that, Jonathan?
It doesn't. That's something that I think is a great recommendation for our consideration. We always do require bonds whenever there's grading at play. That's something that our public works department maintains. So Miramar, for instance, that we have had a bond, I'm not certain if that full bond was released because they had a basement element related to that project. So anytime there's substantial grading, there will be a bond required on the public work side. That's different from a completion bond and so I think that that is something that does make sense for us to take into account, given recent project examples of things and financing issues that we've seen at a number of projects in the city. That's something that could be incorporated through a condition of approval. So we'll have that discussion and I think I can provide even an email update to the commission on that topic.
Thank you. Very good. I got a question. What's our, what is our time duration on construction progress? 90 days to show progress?
It's longer than 90 days. I, that's out of.
It has been a little incremental because I've been watching that site.
I think that's, you have to show progress every, within 180 days.
Yeah.
And every, that extends your permit for another.
There are tiny little things that have, but they're hardly noticeable.
Which project are you referring to?
Well, the Providence.
Oh, Providence, okay.
Oh, at the outlets? Yeah, yeah, they had the big superstructure put up and then there was a little bit of rebar done. I don't know how, what the.
The timeframe gap there. Yes, yeah, so there's.
What is our time?
I'll, that, I'll include, I think that that is accurate, but I'll talk to our building official and provide that as just a general FYI and included in the email response on the other topic to the commissioners, that you have that information handy. So I'll get that as a follow-up email to all of you.
What our time limit is?
Exactly, exactly.
It's just, you know, it's not a very good citizen of the community, a corporate citizen. That's just a, they're being pretty neglectful to our town, in my opinion, on that.
There was a little, I do have to say, you know, Providence sends out that general newsletter that comes to everybody's house, or at least it comes to mine. They did have a paragraph about that.
I think it was in the newspaper too.
Was it in the newspaper? But they, they didn't mention financing. They mentioned, you know, like the time lag and getting materials and other kinds of stuff. Okay.
As long as we're asking.
Go right ahead.
The, the project on Commando Ellis Morris, have they found a development partner? Do you know?
Yeah, no, there, there hasn't been any submittals to the city other than a demolition permit regarding the existing facilities that are on the site. So there's not been a submittal yet for redevelopment. I have not been, I've not received any communication regarding impending submittal. So the only thing that we have on file is that demolition permit.
So as far as you know, they don't have a development partner?
It hasn't been communicated to the city at least.
Motion for adjournment, anyone?
Could move to adjourn to our next regular meeting of the planning commission held on Wednesday, October, October the 4th, 2023 at 6 o'clock at City Hall.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.